And called to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is October 21st, 2020. And I will note for the record that we're joined by Commissioner Lee Jones and Commissioner Penny Giffens. And with that, I will turn it over to Commissioner Giffens to read our statement, please.
Thank you. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate that. And with that, we will begin with our department updates. And we will start as usual with Penny Cottle from the Health Department. Good morning.
Good morning. Glad to be here on this rainy day. I guess I'm glad to be inside. So it looks like you have a nice, nice covered space there to be. So today, I really just want to focus on kind of talking about the numbers. There's lots of conversations about that, and we continue to look at that. Our local numbers have been creeping up recently, so we are watching that, monitoring that very closely. Some of this is following stage five, but I think it's also just people being a little tired. Fall weather bringing us inside more. But as we look across the state and the country, there are areas that are experiencing much larger spikes in their numbers. And so while our numbers are, have been going up in the past couple of weeks, you know, a couple of weeks ago, I came and said, you know, I think on that color-coded map, we could be in blue soon. Maybe I jinxed us, I don't know. But it just is being, it's a reminder of what we need to do, that we have some good things in place. Yes, they are, you know, they're tough. It's hard to do the things that we need to do, but we have some control over what happens. So we have to continue to do all that we can individually to slow the transmission and the spread of COVID-19. We have to continue that six-foot distancing. We have to continue to wear our masks. We have to avoid large crowds. We have to stay home when we are sick, continue hand washing. And I will add that we, it is time, we need to get our flu shots. If you haven't gotten your flu shot yet, please make arrangements to do that. There are lots of opportunities to do that. We have some drive-through clinics that are coming up. We'll have more information about as they get closer. But make plans now to get your flu shot. All of these are prevention strategies that we can do, we can take right now to keep our numbers lower rather than higher. And as we come into fall and winter season, and we come indoors more in Indiana, we really have to think about how we can do things differently. It doesn't mean that we can't enjoy being inside or doing the things that we normally do, but we just have to think about a safer way to do them. And so I would encourage everyone to think about that, be creative, come up with some new and, and interesting ways to kind of connect with individuals and at the same time maintain safety and prevention. I will, will tell you, there are some places that are looking at stay-at-home orders. Michigan, the Health Officer at the University of Michigan, can't remember now the exact county, just issued a 14-day stay-at-home order for students living on and off campus. And that's because their numbers are rising and they are very, very concerned about those numbers. We do not want to have to take those kinds of actions again. And so we, we can control that if we act again. We've talked in the past about we, not me. And if we remember that and we do everything we can, we can, I think, avoid having stay-at-home orders again. I also want to give a shout out to the Clerk's Office and Voter Central for doing a good job keeping people safe as they come in to vote. People are doing a good job of spacing out and all of that. And not everybody is as lucky as we are, I think, to have people who are taking it very seriously and doing everything that they can. So I want to thank the voters for maintaining those distances and following those rules and wearing the masks, but also the staff who are working, and just thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Let's see if there are comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
You're muted.
Yep, we can't hear you. There we go.
I keep on getting kicked off and then, I don't know. I was just saying that I'd just like to reiterate, please, please follow all the recommendations, do what you need to do, and help us control this.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, one of my friends posts pictures every morning of people she sees in line, you know, waiting to early vote, and everybody is wearing masks, there's social distancing. It feels right. It really does. So thank you to everyone who's involved in that.
Absolutely. Yep, good points. And now we are, we are all tired of COVID, but COVID is not tired of us, apparently. And we do want to thank everyone at the Health Department, the Health Board, Dr. Sharp, of course, Ms. Cottle. You know, just when you think you could take a little break and relax a little, nope. The numbers look really bad, and it's really concerning. I heard last night on the national news that we're at 95% ICU bed capacity in the state. I don't know if that's true, you know, verified true or not, but boy, that's a startling number. So we do have to be vigilant. I know we don't want to be, we're tired of it. We want life to go back to normal, but it's not, and we have to take this very seriously. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
And now we'll turn to Ms. Allison Moore, Emergency Management.
Good morning. I'd like to report that we have two October blood drives. And excited to report that one of them is completely full. So we have one scheduled for tomorrow. There are no appointments left available. And then we have the second in October scheduled for the 28th, which is our first evening, one that we have, have ready. And it is, and there's only one spot left open for it, and that is scheduled for the 28th of October. So if that date sounds like something you might have available, you can hop onto the redcross.org website and make that appointment. We do have one scheduled in November, and since we only have one spot open, I'm going to go ahead and mention that, that date, which is November the 9th. Again, you register by appointment only. All of these blood drives are scheduled at the Monroe County Convention Center. We are kind of throwing some dates around since we have been able to fill every date, every time slot but one to have an evening time slot in November. And we have a couple of dates, but nothing has 100% been defined. We're trying to kind of work around that Thanksgiving timeframe, too. So hopefully by next week, I'll have that evening time for a November spot for you guys to let the public know, and hopefully we can get those spots filled. We did help our Health Department yesterday move several supplies over to our new testing site that will be open soon. We're doing a little bit of renovations on that South Morton site, and then that will be open for our public. And no date has been decided yet, but every day we get closer and closer, and we're happy to assist in that process. A non-COVID-related item that we've been working on is our Threat Hazard Risk Assessment. It's a, an, a software-type program where we have to put all of our different threats and our hazards, and we have to categorize them by how high they think and the probability of how high they, the likelihood that it could happen in our county, and then how prepared we are to, how likely we feel we are prepared to handle those different threats and hazards. And it's something that we do annually. It's very much time-consuming, and it takes many different partners that we call upon as we're conducting that assessment. And we have started that this week. It's normally kind of a long process, but with COVID, we're just now starting that. We've set aside some blocked-off days next week to try to get that completed and submitted to the Indiana Department of Homeland Security. And, and then it will very much change this year because our infectious disease numbers, obviously, were much lower than they will need to be in this assessment this year, which then moves several other threats and hazards and those numbers around as well. And then what we can do then is if there are future opportunities for funding and grant funding, then we can tie this assessment and show where our needs were and where our risks are to prove that we need certain dollar amounts for certain items that we can target in the future. So just another non-COVID-related item that's taking a big section of our plate these next few weeks.
Right, thank you so much. And just to correct something I said earlier, I apologize. So we have, thank you again to Michelle Dayton for this information, 36, a little over 36% of ICU beds are available in Indiana. That's not a great number, though. That's still a bad number. But maybe it was a regional number they were reporting last night on the news. So thank you for that update. I don't want to come out and sound worse than it is, but it's still pretty bad with 36.3% available. So with that, let's see if there are comments or questions for Ms. Moore from Commissioner Jones.
All right, no.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, I was at the Emergency Management Commission meeting yesterday, so I've heard some of the same information. But I'm really pleased about the blood drives because that's made a big difference in our community.
Now, are we going to, are we going to hit that record that you wanted to hit?
Well, I mean, I think we're right on track because they weren't going to schedule an evening for November unless we hit all of our time slots, and now they are. And then if we can get those November time slots. So for anyone that may not have heard that challenge in the past, we have collected enough blood to help with 828, saving 828 lives. And so our goal in Monroe County is to be able to, this calendar year, save 1,000. And so if we can fill every slot and can have two, two time slots open, two days different open in October, November, and December, we should be able to collect enough to meet that goal. They won't schedule those December and November time slots unless our October are successful. And so we are right on target for scheduling those October. Now they've opened that November. If our, if, if our spots get filled in November, they'll add that additional slot in December, which will then help us to meet our goal, so.
Yeah, excellent. And that would be a very worthy thing. So if anybody is able to, and they haven't yet donated, please consider doing so. And I will also add that a big thank you to the Monroe County Convention Center for all their help, and they've allowed this to be a very safe socially-distanced, physically-distanced event to ensure that this is a safe process for everyone. So thanks, thanks for all your work on that as well. Excellent. Seeing nothing else, we'll turn now to Ms. Ridge, Highway Director, Public Works Director.
Yes. Don't have a lot to report. It's been a rainy week a little bit, so we've actually worked around the rain to finish up some paving up north. And now we will be going around to various locations at the end of this towards, as we wind down paving season, what we call full-depth patches, where we have different, just not a whole road, but a section of road that might need to be milled out and replaced to fix those spots. So mowing still, trimming brush. So yeah, not, it's, it's a little wet, so not a lot going on.
As you were reporting that, I heard a big branch fall onto the road down my street, so.
We're going to pull on that.
Yeah, right. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, not right now.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, how, how late in the season do you typically keep up some of this small paving?
The paving? Until the asphalt plant closes. And that's pretty much usually about the first week of December that they'll stop making asphalt. And that's also weather dictated, temperature-wise. So if it stays warm and they have the, they have the work for it to keep the plant open, but usually they use that time in the winter to shut down their plant to do any necessary repairs and everything for the next paving season.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Ms. Ridge. We appreciate you and all of the crews that work so hard to keep us safe on the roads. All right, with that, we have our Monroe County Treasurer, Ms. Jessica McClellan, joining us to give us an update on the tax deadline.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak about this today at your meeting. This is great. Fall taxes are due on November 10th, which is three weeks from yesterday. Our courthouse, the entire courthouse and where the treasurer is located, is open by appointment only, and that's to make the courthouse the safest environment that we can for the entire community. So you can, you can pay in person, and you can do that by calling our office to make an appointment. And our office phone number is 812-349-2530. There are many other ways to pay other than coming in person. For example, the mail. As much as we've heard that there have been some problems with the mail, we got 13,000 letters, 13,000 individual letters in the spring. We had a huge amount of mail, and we are very happy to get mail. That is an option, paying online is an option. We are also going to have our Dropbox installed at the north doors. Our maintenance department is working on installing a Dropbox for taxpayers. That is a great option to come in person, and we will get that payment the same day that you drop it off. In the meantime, our wonderful Dina, who is working down by the doors and helping the community come in and find what they need, she will also have a locked box with her until we get that installed to take payments from people. It is a nasty rainy day today, and people are just walking up to the door and wanting to pay their taxes. So we will help you any way that we can to make it simple. There are some other options like paying online and even dropping it off at some local banks. All of this information is in a press release that will be, is on the county website, and it's just as soon as they get it up this morning. It's in the breaking news section, and it's going to be called Tax Time Fall 2020. Things are going really well so far. We've already gotten 400 pieces of mail that we're counting as our, as fall payments, but we've been getting fall payments ever since the spring deadline ended. So thank you so much, Commissioners, for having me on here to talk about this. And there's so much information that I really advise taxpayers, if they can, to call our office or go online and look at this press release. It's kind of just an info sheet about how to pay your taxes, how to reprint a tax bill, how to know if we got your payment, you know, where to go or who to call to see if we received your payment, and so much more. So that is a quick rundown.
Great, thank you so much. Would you stay on the line for a moment? Let's see if my colleagues have any questions. Commissioner Jones?
So just thank you for taking such an effort to make so many different ways available to pay taxes. This is kind of a difficult time for a lot of people.
Yeah, absolutely. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I was going to ask if, if I could check to see if I'd already paid, and so I guess I need to get online. Thanks for already addressing that.
I can look it up as soon as I get off the phone and send you an email, or I can look it up now and we can tell the whole, no.
No, I do not want, I, I, no, no special, special treatment here. Come on, I can do this myself.
All right, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much, Ms. McClellan, Monroe County Treasurer, Jessica McClellan. Thank you so much. And we do, we appreciate the many ways that are available. I'm sure taxpayers appreciate it. And yeah, a big shout out to Ms. Dina Delauter Myers for staffing the door at the north side of the courthouse. She's there most days, and she's doing temperature checks and checking folks in. And, and other times, it's Jill Newman from our office. So it's the Commissioner's office that's downstairs and serving as the gatekeeper. But yes, you can always make an appointment to get into any county building. We're happy to have you, but we do want to make sure that we're doing this safely and protecting the community, but also, of course, our employees as well, so we can all keep serving you. Excellent. With that, let's turn it over to public comments. See if there's any public comment for items not on our agenda. This will be limited to three minutes. And Ms. Dayton, do you have a sound that you will, you can play for us? Right, when you hear that tone, that means you're at 2:30. You'll have 30 seconds to complete your public comment. So all you have to do is go to the bottom of the screen and raise your hand. It looks like we do have somebody who wants to speak.
First up is Jim Shelton.
Great, Mr. Shelton, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Shelton with the chamber. But I want to update you and the public right now on our latest CASA training. I'm very happy to report that the community has really stepped up. We had a class start Monday, 20 people signed up. That's a, one of the biggest classes that anybody can remember. So thank you very much to the community. Thank you guys for letting me come on here and bother you periodically to let the public know about the training. Sad to say, that's not going to make everything wonderful. The COVID-19 is putting severe stress on families, and that's going to probably get worse as economic things impact people and special assistance starts to run out. And then just being tired of it stresses families, and sadly, that a lot of times results in the children being ignored or being abused. So I know there are probably a lot of people who thought about it and decided not to do it this time or weren't able to. We don't have our 2021 schedule set yet, but there will be a training in the spring, I am sure. So if you're still on the fence, and if you need more information, you've got several months to look into it. I would say that if you're really on the fence, a good way to find out if it's for you or not is to sign up for the training and go through the training. We have typically a couple of people every year for every training session who, as a result of that, decide they really can't do it, or at least they can't do it now. So think about it. We will need, we've got about 50 kids now. These 20 volunteers, if they all make it, will take up some of that, take a good chunk of that, because a lot of times a volunteer will have a couple of kids in a family. So we don't, you know, we don't need 50 volunteers to cover 50 kids. But we will have continuing numbers of children getting into the juvenile system because their parents have refused or neglected them, and they really need a CASA. Just historically, a CASA being involved makes the children's, makes the case last more, a shorter amount of time, makes the kids be in foster care a shorter amount of time. So think about it. You can call 333-2272 and talk to the staff if you have questions. You can go on the webpage, monroecountycasa.org, click on the volunteer link, and you'll see a frequently asked question page that'll provide a lot of info that you might need. So thank you guys again very much for letting me use your meetings as a platform to help spread the word. And thanks to all the people and volunteers who helped recruit these 20 people. So thank you.
Right, thank you, Mr. Shelton. And indeed, we so appreciate the work of all the CASAs and those who are training to become CASAs, and they make a huge difference in our community and in the lives of a lot of children. So we appreciate that. It's, it's not easy work, but it is so necessary. Thank you for that. Is there anyone else who wishes to offer a public comment on an item not on our agenda? Just simply go into, to raise your hand. It's the blue hand icon.
There are no other hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. I appreciate your work as always. And with that, we will move on to our next agenda item. Commissioner Jones?
First, I would like to move to add an item to the agenda for, to award the bid for Waddle Brothers for the Limestone Greenway Safety Rail.
Second?
Great, we have a motion and we have a second. Any comments or questions? This will become Item E on our agenda. All right, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on amending our agenda?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion to amend is approved 3-0.
Thank you so much. And next item, please.
Move to approve the minutes for October 14th, 2020.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any edits, comments, corrections for Ms. Freeman?
I didn't see any.
Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of the minutes for October 14th, 2020?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved 3 to 0.
All right, thank you so much. And now we will move on to the next item, please.
Move approval of the claims stack it accounts payable October 21st, 2020, and payroll October 23rd, 2020.
Second?
Right, we have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Miller, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The total for claims was $1,677,739.74. $721,914.29 was for M Jewel, which was for tax redemption and surplus. $269,380.89 were for Anthem, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield for October claims and fees. And finally, $220,000 was for Nexus Group Inc., which was for payment number three for the 2020 cyclical reassessment. And as far as payroll is concerned, the total was $1,581,322.2, approximately 70% of that, or $1,117,371.58, were for the main and supplemental payrolls. The remaining approximately 30%, or $463,950.44, were for the payroll-related AP claim items.
Right, thank you, Mr. Miller. Let's see if there are comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, I had, I had had questions about some of the payment, and I was very grateful to Mr. Cockrell for explaining those to me.
Yeah, the, the tax, the tax sale is an unusual item on our claims dot it. So yeah, good, good call. All right, is there any public comment on this item? Just simply go to the bottom of the screen, raise your hand.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on accounts payable October 21st and payroll October 23rd, 2020?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved 3 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I will note that we have received a report from the Treasurer's Office for September 2020. And with that, we will move on to new business.
Move to approve Emergency Management Program Grant. Fund name, general. Fund number, 1,000, in the amount of $51,397.50.
Second?
Right, we have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Moore?
Good morning again, Commissioners. I bring to you our salary reimbursement grant. Every year, we have an assessment that our office must complete. And if our office completes that assessment, then the county, the local county, gets 50% of up to three staff members of their salary reimbursed back into our general fund. And so it is time to be willing to accept our 2020. And though 2020 is not over, and I did actually mention that we were working on that assessment with that thyra that I mentioned earlier, there are numerous different options, and, and we only have to select so many options under each different section to meet our assessment. So we actually met our assessment months ago within our county, but we like to hit everything if we can that's on that assessment that the state gives us. It just betters our county and makes us more prepared. And so that thyra is actually something we wouldn't necessarily have to do because we've actually met our assessment, but it's something that we will be going ahead and conducting just to try to check off everything that they are encouraging us to complete. And so because we've actually already met that assessment, we now have this grant agreement before you so that we'll be able to start the process to receive those funds back to our county.
Great, thank you so much, Ms. Moore. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Well, I don't think we ever want to turn down any funds that are being turned to us. And I'm, I'm, I find it very reassuring that you're working through the entire assessment, and our community really will be prepared, we hope, for any kind of emergency.
Thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, and I appreciate the fact you're going the extra mile to apply for the, the funding back to us. It keeps things moving in other directions for all of us. It keeps things moving in other directions for all of us.
Absolutely.
Yep, that's great. It's a real benefit to our budget. All right, with that, let's see if there is any public comment on this item.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Emergency Management Salary Reimbursement Grant?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved 3 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve an application for Guardian Hospital Indemnity Plan. Fund name, payroll clearing, fund number 5100, in an amount that is not applicable.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and we have a second and we have Ms. Sensensteine here from Human Resources. Tell us about it, please.
Sure, good morning. This is a new plan that we are going to offer during open enrollment next week. It's through Guardian Insurance and we already use Guardian as our vision provider. So, we're adding another plan with them. And ultimately, this is to the agreement for this plan. I think it's a great plan to offer for employees, but it also coincides with our agreement that steel benefits, because they put their, the Guardian logo on our benefits website and that helped reduce the costs of that benefit administration website. So, I do think that, you know, in 2020, we, it's hard to say what can happen. And I think this hospital indemnity plan will be very, I think there might be a lot of employees who are interested in it. So, you know, help you plan for that, that unknown of what could happen. You know, you receive a cash benefit if you were to be hospitalized. So, I think it's a great plan to offer, but it also helps us offset those costs for our website.
Right, excellent. Let's see if there are comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, not right now.
Commissioner Giffens?
So, people can apply for two different levels of the benefits, right?
Correct, there's sort of like a lower plan and a higher plan. I think that it's a higher cash benefit for the higher plan. You're going to pay more per month. You'll get $2,000 when you, if you're hospitalized and then you're paid a certain amount per day up to 15 days.
Thank you. I'll just say, I really appreciate you looked into this and pulled it together so quickly. It's a great option for our employees and it is optional, so. But if somebody is worried about the potential for a hospital bill, this is a really good plan that you're, that you've pulled together. So, thank you for that, it's, it means a lot.
Thanks.
All right, so, let's see if there is, sorry, big noisy truck just went by. Let's see if there is any public comment on this item. Just raise your hand, little blue icon.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. With that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Guardian Hospital Indemnity Plan application?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved 3 to 0.
Right, thank you so much. Next item, please, thank you, Ms. Sensensteine.
Move to approve change order number nine for the YSB Expansion Project. Fund name and number are not applicable and it is a deduction in the amount of $22,000, 2200,000, 22, 2200,702,000 and, sorry, 22 cents. My brain's not working today.
I think it's $22,702.22, is that correct?
Yes, it is, yeah.
I second that amount.
Perfect, we're such a good team. All right, we have a motion and we have a second, Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, part of our agreement and part of the bid for our YSB Expansion Project included a contingency. That project is all, all complete at this point, with the exception of the pathway that we, that you guys approved a contract for a few weeks ago. That actually may be complete, I don't have an update on that. But not all that contingency was required. The $22,702.22 was not, and so, that's this change order.
Great, thank you, sir. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, it's just a pretty wonderful thing when a job gets finished and there's actually a change order that brings money back to us.
Yeah, Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, agreed, that was, that was really nice to open up our package and see a refund, yeah.
Yeah, it is a good thing, it's a very good thing. And it's an exciting project and I can't wait until the day we can all go see it together. That would be really nice and invite the community and have a little ribbon cutting. So, with that, let's see if there's any public comment on this item.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Building Associates Change Order Number Nine?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved 3 to 0.
Thank you so much and we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve the Personnel Policy Handbook Changes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Did we want to talk about this first? I'll go start with Mr. Cockrell, I guess.
Well, I would just say that the changes outlined in this are fourfold. One is to include countywide training. The two, second is to the conversion of sick time to personal benefit time. The third is to remove some physician statements after three days because of the conversion from sick time to personal benefit time. And fourth is to change the bereavement time from five days to three days and make it more coincide with other employers in the area. And, and again, that's also part of the conversion of the sick to personal benefit time. Those are the changes that are contemplated in this. I guess, at, at last night's council meeting, they, they approved a salary ordinance that would be reflected of the, for 2021 of the personnel policy in place as of yesterday. I think that there are some questions that I have and that our department has about what would happen if this were approved with that provision in place. I think we would, our office would recommend that you table this or continue this till next week so we can work through those details and get a clean and clear answer to you as to what is the effect based upon that, that, that action by the council last night.
Right, that is concerning. See comments, questions or motion, Commissioner Jones?
Well, yes, I'd like to just say that it was a little startling that the council, we had kind of been under the impression that there was support for this. But yeah, I move that we continue the Personnel Policy Handbook Changes until next week.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So, this, item D until the October 28 Commissioners Meeting, so that's next Wednesday, correct? All right, any other comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Not right now.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I just look forward to hearing more from the legal department.
Yeah, we definitely need some clarity on this and I appreciate that it's a short span of time, but let's, let's get this figured out. We have to be on the same page with the council. And with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on continuing item D until October 28, 2020?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved 3-0.
Thank you, sir. And now we have our new item E.
Move to award the bid for the Greenway Safety Rail to Weddell Brothers.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, we received bids last week, or we received a bid last week for the safety rails for the Limestone Greenway. The bid was for $72,300. We would like to negotiate the agreement and hopefully get it onto your agenda next week. So, this would be awarding the bid and moving the process forward.
Great, thank you so much. Let's see if there's, first, we'll see if there's any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, not right now.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, I'm just glad that we're adding some extra railing down there. I enjoy walking the Limestone Greenway Trail and I can see where there's a need for it.
Yeah, absolutely. So, let's see, Ms. Whitmer is on, is on our meeting platform today. Did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
No, I totally agree with Commissioner Giffens, it is needed. DNR also has suggested, and I believe it is needed also. And we have staff out there cleaning the leaves off as fast as they're falling down, so be patient with us.
Yeah, it's hard to stay ahead of the leaves this time of year, for sure. All right, thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your, raise the blue hand, hit the blue hand icon.
There are no hands raised.
All right, thank you again, Ms. Dayton. And with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on accepting the bid from the Weddell Brothers?
And just to be clear, this is awarding the bid to them so we can negotiate the contract. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved 3 to 0.
Great, thank you so much. So, we don't have any appointments today, we do have a few announcements. Just a reminder to everyone that we set the Halloween hours for 6 to 8 p.m., that's October 31. And please see co.monroe.in.us, the county website, for guidelines and information, including what Ms. Moore put together, which was a list of fire stations that are participating in a safe trick-or-treating environment for the family. So, please visit our website for all of those details. COVID doesn't take a holiday just because we do, so just be careful and be aware. It's scary enough to have COVID. All right, so, note as well that we are still accepting applications for CARES funding for businesses and social service organizations anywhere in the county. And as of last Thursday, we have granted a total of $167,702 to our area businesses and social service organizations. And to the taxing units, we have provided $36,367, which is all great. But note that this past week, we increased the cap. So, initially, businesses and social service organizations were limited to $10,000 per entity. That cap has been increased to $20,000. So, if you have COVID-related non-personnel expenses that have not been covered by other sources, other grants or loans, please visit co.monroe.in.us. You'll find the application link and information on our website. And Ms. Giffens, did you want to talk about early voting?
Yes, thank you. As of the end of the day yesterday, we had had almost 11,000 people early vote here in Monroe County. And that's just in-person early voting. As of Monday, over 9,700 absentee ballots had been returned and the clerk had sent out, clerk's office had sent out over 14,000 absentee ballots. You're able also, if you're voting absentee, to track your ballot and whether or not it's been returned through the indiana voters.in.gov website. You do that, you click on vote by mail and then visit my voter portal. I was able to do that because I voted absentee this year and it, it works like a charm, it's really nice. Want to remind people that tomorrow's the deadline for submitting requests for an absentee ballot. They have to have it in the office. If it arrives there on Friday, it's too late, I'm sorry, that's just the state rules. But we're also on track to basically exceed previous numbers for early voting. It's amazing, we really appreciate how Monroe County voters are getting out there. Remind people they still have nine and a half more days of early voting and then they'll be able to vote on November 3 at their customary polling place that they want. I hope also either Commissioner Thomas or Commissioner Jones will remind people about the Township Assistance that's available. But thank you for that time to talk about voting.
I didn't hear the last part of your statement of what you wanted us to remind folks.
About Township Assistance?
Yep, we got that covered, right? All right, so, yes, it's important to have a plan for your vote. Make a plan, allow a lot of time. It took me an hour and 45 in line on Monday, well worth it. And everyone was masked and it was a bit festive, even though it was cold, a little cooler, and it was dreary. But it was great to log that vote and get it done. So, please remember to bring your face covering, face shield, face mask. And be safe, but make a plan and allow time and don't, don't get impatient. It's well worth it. And it is a good, it is good to remember that Election Day isn't just November 3. Election Day ends November 3, but you have until November 3 to cast your ballot. And yes, those applications for mail-in early voting are due tomorrow. So, thank you for that reminder as well. IndianaVoters.com, MonroeCountyVoters.us are the two sites you're going to need to use the most. I will note as well that we are accepting applications for all boards and commissions for the 2021 year. We are especially interested in folks who are willing to apply for and are interested in positions on the South Central Regional Sewer District Board. The Monroe Fire District is going to be adding two spots, one in Bloomington Township and one in Van Buren Township. You cannot live in the city, but we'd like to get applicants from those two townships, especially those folks who have some budget experience and/or fire service experience. We're also looking for applicants through Affordable Housing Commission, the Environmental Commission and the Human Rights Commission, but any, anyone, and the Women's Commission and anyone who is interested in applying for any of our boards or commissions, we encourage you to do so soon. We're going to be starting that interview process shortly. And we look forward to having your experience and your wisdom and your, your voice to help guide Monroe County Government to, to serve everyone. I will note that as of last week, Washington Township Trustee Barb Uli reported that 39, about $39,000 in Township Assistance funding have been provided for residents anywhere in the county. And that's a good reminder for anyone in the county who needs assistance with shelter or facing utility disconnections, please contact your Township Trustee as soon as possible. Every county resident, whether they live in a city, town or not, has a Township Trustee. Please contact them soon if you need assistance so that we can provide that. We're pleased to work with the council to provide this Township Assistance funding through CARES for our residents to keep them housed and to keep the utilities on. I will note as well that we have, I did have one more thing. A reminder about the fact that we're going to, we're going to assume at this point that the remainder of our meetings throughout county government through the end of 2020 at least will be virtual. This will rely on the governor continuing an order, but... This will rely on a government, the governor continuing an order, but please plan on that. If anything changes, we will let you know, but that is our intention. Again, a reminder, tax deadline, November 10th. Call 349-2530 or email the Treasurer's Office to make an appointment or if you need assistance with any of the many, many options available to you to pay your property tax bill for the fall. And again, we may be tired of COVID, but it is not tired of us. And I wish it were, but it is not. So with that, do any, my colleagues have anything else they wish to add?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, everyone. Be well and we will see you here next week with our continued item and others. With that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.